That is college, career and life readiness.
Welcome to the July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four School Board Workshop. Today, we will be covering hurricane preparation, student meal prices, science adoption timeline, and college career and life readiness. Superintendent Connor, would you like to introduce your staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the introduction. We're going to begin talking about emergency operations preparedness with the hurricane season is underway, and we have several of our operations teams, starting with our Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Mike Kemp, our Executive Director of Facility Services, Jody Dumas, and we have our Chief of Police, Mr. Steve Lorenz. So I will hand it over to, oh, and our Director of Safety and Security, Jason Overbay. All right, I'll hand it over to Dr. Kemp if you want to introduce.
Well, thank you, Fr. Your Honor. Thank you for, um... I thank the board for making the request for this, actually. As relatively new to Sarasota County, I can tell you, it was a great process for me to go through to review, to look at what our emergency preparation was, what our emergency preparedness plans happened to be. And I was, as a process person, I was specifically interested in the action after reviews, action, after-action reviews, the military terms, AARs, that we use to do better every time there's an event. So I was, I was impressed with what I saw and what I've been able to uncover so far. So the lessons learned piece is a big, is a big, big event because, like it or not, there's going to be another event. There will, there will be another named storm, there'll be, so it's really not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Interestingly enough, according to NOAA, you know, they projected seventeen to twenty-five named storms for the two thousand and twenty-four season, and out of the seventeen to twenty-five named storms, of which eight to thirteen, they've, they've projected to be hurricanes, and out of those thirteen, they projected four to seven to be major hurricanes. So interestingly enough, we've already had two named storms, one major hurricane with Hurricane Burl that just landed July one, and we've dodged, we, we were fortunate enough to dodge that one in our area. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So today, to me, it's really about sharing our emergency preparedness plans and the response efforts that the team has put together with you along the way. We've always had a great partnership with the county, our relationships with the county. We continually reach out to this, our city manager, Jonathan Lewis, yeah, Jonathan Lewis and Rich Collins, the EOC Director, have had an opportunity to spend some time with them. You know, we always work collaboratively. Anytime there's a state of emergency or Florida declares an event, a state emergency event, we, we immediately partner and work with them. So, you know, with that said, just as we report to the superintendent and to the board, our, our EOC, our EOC partners, our county partners, report to the BCC, and they execute the, the, they execute the plans of the, of the BCC just as we do the direction of the superintendent through the board. So with that said, I just want to turn it over to the team. I want to personally and publicly thank the team for all that you guys have done to, to, not only to make sure our community's ready, but to make sure that our staff understands what's supposed to do, what we're supposed to do, and how we get better with that each time. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Dumas.
Thank you, Dr. Kemp, for the opportunity and the introduction. And if I could have the perfect, if I could have the presentation up, that's awesome. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and I would just kind of capitalize on what Dr. Kemp said. It really is, in terms of our emergency management plans, it has been and continues to be really a heavy, a heavy reliance on the county staff. The county is really full-time experts in, in emergency management and planning for disasters and that type of role. And so we do rely heavily on their team, and, and they step up every time to come and partner with us, not only on the training, but we've, you know, we've some, stole some ideas from them that work in our organization, so it is truly a partnership. One thing I will say is, as we talk about emergency preparedness, for not only a particular storm, but really for the, for the hurricane season, we think about it in terms of pre-storm prep, right? Kind of three phases, pre-storm prep, what are we doing before the season, and what are we doing before a storm to kind of prepare for that particular storm? Then during the event, what are we doing to make sure that our facilities and everything are hunkered down, we're closed where we need to be closed, and then we've got shelter operations up and running, and so we'll talk about that. And then as soon as that storm passes, how do we move into the, what we call the recovery phase, right? And that's not only trying to close shelters, but then recover as a school district, because remember, our most important role is to get kids back in school as quickly as possible. That helps return the community kind of to normal operations, especially when we experienced a, an extreme event like we had down in Northport just a little while ago where we had the extreme flooding. So it helps to get the community back into normal operations. So we are extremely, extremely critical in terms of how we partner with the county to not only get ourselves back in, in, in operation, but then to get the community back together too. So with that, that's kind of how we're going to take you through the presentation today. If you have any questions as we're going, certainly stop us and ask, and we're happy to elaborate. Okay. So in terms of that, that talking about in three phases, what does pre-storm prep look like for us? And I will say, the other thing I want to capitalize on what Dr. Kemp said is, this has really been learning over time. And you know, some of you have been on the board for a long time or have been in the district for a long time. We've had several events where we've had to, we've had to hunker down, we've had very large shelter operations in place, and so each time, we've kind of learned from our mistakes and got us to a place where I think we're in pretty good shape today. But we always debrief and always try to get better at what we're doing. So it's, it's constantly trying to get better at this process, because the other thing I will remind you of, this is not our core operation, right? We're all about running schools and educating students and maintaining buildings, and we're all involved in our roles in support of that process. So this is something that's not in our core business, and so we've constantly got to focus on how do we get better at it, because we don't do it every day like the county does. But in terms of, let's talk about Phase One, pre-storm prep. Really, that starts with a designation of essential staff. The superintendent does that every year. He's already done that by sending a letter to who we designate by job description as being operationally essential for a potential event. That letter goes out and notifies them. And then as a storm's approaching, then the superintendent declares a state of emergency in the school district, and that automatically allows him to call people in outside of the scope of work, and then assign duties that may not be in their scope of work. It calls certain provisions into the contract language that allows him to do executive, make executive decisions based on that storm. So the groundwork has been laid for that, those always go out every year. As a part of that process, we also make assignments every year. And so if you are designated as essential personnel, what's your role in the district? And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as, as we move forward. Lynn, Lynn Peterson and her staff, always, every year, part of that pre-hurricane season prep is to make sure that our insurance coverage is aligned. Building values change all the time, and so with our insurance coverage, she comes to you several times a year, but with our carriers and everybody else that's involved in our insurance process, we need to make sure that we've got our building values updated every year. So if we do get a catastrophic event, our insurance coverage is, is ready to kick in. In addition to that, one of the things we made changes to this year, based on our experiences from the last storm, is we've got a team of response individuals that come from our insurance companies that only, that help us do inspections, they help us write the reports, it helps us submit the claims. We had a pre, a pre-hurricane meeting this year with that entire team to make sure from the, from the key things that we learned last year when we had some damage, to what we're going into storm, storm season this year, making sure we're capitalizing on terms of how are we documenting, what are we documenting, and then how quickly can we get those insurance teams on our campuses is also key. So pre-staging people in terms of those teams is something that we've already done this year, and again, that's a key learning from last year that we've modified. Purchasing agreements and contracts. Tracy Brizendine and her staff do a wonderful job, they've got a whole separate manual set up, they've got emergency contracts in place that they enact if we potentially are going to need services during a storm or recovery after a storm. So they are always reviewing that as we go into hurricane season. Staging of equipment. We pre-stage some equipment early on before the season, like additional custodial supplies. So, and our shelter sites, it's one of our responsibilities for running custodial, so we pre-position additional paper, supplies, and things of that nature. As we get closer to a storm, Sarah Dan, our Director of Food Service, will pre-position additional food, move food from other sites into the shelter sites. We've also got, which we purchased a few years ago, we've got mobile refrigeration units that we can bring onsite if we need to for, for additional food storage. That starts to happen. Site prep. Site prep in terms of locking down, that's key for us as a storm's coming in. We want to make sure that we've got everything that we can tied down, put away, locked away. That all starts to happen. Training for damage assessment teams, as we talk about recovery, we'll dig into that a little bit, but we start February, March or so, our, our damage assessment teams in facilities, planning and construction, the after-event people. We do a mock event, which I'll show you, in terms of how we're going to assess damage, do a little bit of training, safety training for our individuals, and that all ties back into the assurance conversation to make sure we've got the right data so that we can get insurance coverage and reimbursement from FEMA. That happens before we get there. And then as we get closer to an event, two key things, if, once we're responding, is tires for any of our vehicles that are going to be out and about. If you get a lot of damage, that's typically what you blow is a lot of tires, so we've got to make sure we've got tires in stock, transportation's ready to go, and then pre-fuel, we pre-fuel all of our fleet, all of our fuel tanks, and we pre-fuel all of our buses because we're also providing transportation to special needs individuals in and out of our, our special needs shelters. So those are kind of some of the things that, as we're talking about pre-storm prep, we, we start to look at. Oops. Let's talk a little bit more about essential staff, because that's always a conversation every year. We designate superintendent, send, superintendent designates all administrative personnel in the district as essential, and they have various roles. The majority of all administrators are assigned to staff shelter sites, and we'll dig into shelter, shelter staffing in a minute, but the majority of those individuals are at shelter sites, either A or B shift, and they have various roles. As you dig into the departments, those, those administrators are doing department duties. Facilities and construction, they're typically on the front side of the storm with lockdown set up, making sure we're ready and prepped for the storm. Their role really comes after storm passes through with site assessment, evaluation, and recovery. Sarah Dan, in terms of food service, her teams are, again, prepping to start the storm, and they really have an essential role during the storm, right? We're providing all the food in the shelters, that's her team's responsibility. Safety and security, police, we provide all the security to all of our shelters, so their, their staff, their administrative staff is involved in staffing and making sure that's set up correctly. Communications is key for us, not only internally, but then externally to the community, so we have a representative of the EOC off Craig's staff, and then Craig is part of our continuity of operations plan, our, our major team that goes to either STC or stays here, so that we're communicating both internally and externally, and, and aligning with the county, because that's the other thing we've struggled with over the course of the years, is who puts what out first, and make sure we're all aligned with that. So that's key, and that's a change we made recently, really under Craig's direction. Transportation, obviously, is involved from staff, transporting into our shelters, our special need shelters, so they're always up and running prior to the storm. And some of the flooding they ran right after the storm, evacuating people with some of the flooding coming in, so they're involved throughout the, the course of the, the event. IT, obviously, is making sure that everything's locked down, safe, and we've got everything backed up, ready to go. And the other thing that we brought on in the last few years is, as we are concerned about staffing, if we get a really big event, you know, people get scared, and sometimes it's tough to get them into, to some of these essential roles. And so HR has really taken over the staffing of all of our sites, all of our shelter sites with all administrative personnel. They are the ones that are responsible, of course, they're the staffing experts anyway, so Danielle Schwade and Al Hareda, they place people into the shelter sites, into the shelter assignments. But the other thing we've done is we've reached out to non-essential people in the district that typically have not worked shelters in disaster response, for example, instructional staff. And Danielle Schwade maintains a list of a hundred, a hundred and twenty instructional staff, we reach out every year, volunteers who say, they're not required to come in, but they say, if you need me, call me, and we'll come in. So we've got kind of an on-deck staff now that we can call in and supplement some of our shelter sites if we have to have that happen in an event that we've got a large event, or in an extended event. Typically, if we can't shut, shut shelters down right away, and we've got to have multiple days of rotation of individuals, we want to be able to let certain people go home so they can deal with their families and whatever they got to deal with personally, and so these teams will be essential to help us out with that, that are on staffing. Any questions at this point? Okay, so let's dig into shelter operations a little bit. Several years ago, it was actually previous to Bonnie Patter, Mitzi Corcoran and I worked with the county in coming up with a brand-new agreement, which came to you, and I don't know if you remember, but you, you adopted that agreement. And really what it did, it clarified the nature of how we work with the county in terms of shelters, and, and it really clarified our role. I think essentially, we are a subcontractor to the county for shelter operations. And so that was important, I think, in that agreement. It established roles and responsibilities, really solidified over the course of the last few years what we have learned, but it really solidified the, the fact that, again, we are a subcontractor, and that we bill all of our services to the county. So one of the things we always have conversations about as a team is, my gosh, we open all fourteen shelters at one time, and, and, you know, we never used to do that, but that's a change the county's made. That's costly, and so we have a lot of staff involved in that, so we want to make sure we can recover those costs as quickly as possible. So we actually, we build a county directly for anything regarding shelter events that we have to staff, and so that was, that was clarified in, in that agreement. Also, and this was actually started under former Chief Enos, we put together a shelter operations manual, really a disaster operations manual that Jason has kind of run with. Jason, you want to comment a little bit about that operations manual?
Yeah, so in two thousand and nineteen, Chief Enos asked us to look back at hurricane response here in the county, and it was probably two bins' worth of paperwork that we took, put together, and we put together a comprehensive manual that we update and turn in to executive staff every year to have it approved. Inside the manual, we have response calendars for facilities that gives them a checklist of things that they're supposed to check at different times during pre-storm activities. We have the same for administrators and principals. It's a five, five-day-out checklist, a three-day-out checklist, a two-day-out checklist. And then as Jody gets through the presentation, you'll see a, a flow chart, a leadership structure, and you'll see the responsibilities that fall under the Sarasota County School District, and we have detailed job descriptions inside the manual for each one of those jobs, for the administrator to hand out to the people that are assigned, so that they can see what it is they're supposed to do to reinforce the training that they get from the county. So we're very proud of the manual, it's really a living document that we, we work on constantly. Nicole Double and I with the county, we work on it constantly throughout the year to have it ready for this time of the year, and, and as Jody mentioned, it did all start under Chief Enos.
The other thing that we have, we developed a few years ago, is one of the complications every year was, and difficulty for our shelter managers, and Ms. Rose, you've been a shelter manager before, but where do, where do we, yeah, where do we put everybody? Where do they go? How many go in which spaces? And so we also developed a comprehensive booklet that for every shelter, and I'll show you an example in here, we designate the spaces that are shelter-designated spaces. Where do pets go? Where's the clinic? Where do we stage this? Where do we stage that? Who goes where? How many go in each area? So we kind of lay that out by each building for all of our, all our administrators to make it a little easier for them. This is an example of that. All the way on the left, that's the operational manual that Jason was just speaking of, that we give to principals, APs every year, all of our administrative personnel that are, that are in shelters. The example to the right is coming out of this other booklet, this is, this shows an example from Brookside, it talks about who goes what, where and when, what the capacities are. And then right in the middle, I think, is the most important, for every one of our sites, we've got a detailed fish layout of the space and how many occupants go in that space, and that's campus-wide, because even though we have, like Gulf Gate, for example, is, is one of our shelters, not all of Gulf Gate is protected from wind load, so we've got to make sure we, we spell out essentially where everybody goes. Got, Jason?
So inside of both manuals, to reiterate on this, we have load-in charts for the registers to follow that give them what rooms they're supposed to fill first, how many people they put in that room, and, and they fill it to about seventy-five percent capacity before they move to a second room, and then we have stop breaks in where they're supposed to notify the county when we've reached certain levels of citizens inside the shelters, so that the county's always aware of the amount of people that we have in, so that they can shift resources before the storm hits to make sure we have adequate staffing at, at the shelter sites, depending on who's getting the most people.
So this is, this is our published list of shelters, there are fourteen on this list, there are three that aren't on this list because they're non-public shelters, they're the special need shelters. So in addition to this list, there's Lamarck, there's Tatum Ridge, that are typically our, our special need shelters that are open right away, and then Cranberry is opened as a third special need shelter, and Overflow from South County if we need to. And again, all fourteen of these are opened at the same time. This is one of the significant changes that was made over the last couple of years, as a response of several conversations we had with our administrators, our teams that are manning shelter sites, and in terms, in terms of collaborating with county staff, we, we, over the years, have struggled with who shows up, what is everybody doing? Again, this was nailed down in our agreement we put together with the county a few years ago, really changed the way we organize shelters. Thank you to Rich Collins and his team, they came out to SLI a year ago, not this past year, a year ago, and kind of rolled this structure out to our team, and I think it's really worked well. But what it does, it shows, everybody on the left is in green, is kind of school district personnel in a shelter and what we're responsible for. Everything on the right is, is from the county staff and what they're responsible for. Key at the top is that evacuation center manager. That is actually county staff now, and that's a change from, from Ms. Rose when you were involved in, and really, we went in that direction because county staff has access to the EOC, they can train throughout the year, they become experts in running a shelter, they have access to us a very few number of days a year, so it's a struggle for us. Again, it's not part of our core responsibility. So they really have taken over responsibility for most shelter operations onsite, that is their team. They also have, again, to address communications issues we've had in the past, they have established somebody on every site, that's the communications person that's responsible for making sure that the, the briefings are, are hit, the agendas are hit, and at the shelter site, the topics that are supposed to be covered in the briefings are on the agenda for the conversation to the EOC. And they're responsible for, for everything, again, everything you see on the left, we're responsible, everything on the right, basically custodial, security, food service, our nurses are kind of our responsibility within shelters. This coming year, as a result of some of the conversations we had last year, they will also be staging some of the emergency response staff, medical staff at all of our shelters to assist, because our nursing staff just can't cover some of the, some of the issues we are encountering. So that's, that's an improvement they've made this year as a promise to us. That staffing changes a little bit at our special need shelters, which are much more involved, where we've got oxygen, and we've got a full nursing staff, and so in those cases, the Department of Health really drives what goes on in those particular shelters. And again, that's Lamarck and Tatum Ridge. All of this is driven by county EOC and that organization at the EOC, and I want to provide this graph, and I want to thank the county for this, this was in their presentation last year, this is their graphic, but this is there, and Chief Enos has been there, and Chief Lorenz has been there, this is how they organize the EOC during event, and there are several different legs of the EOC, all responsible for something different. We are kind of, right in that section of Human Services there, that's highlighted in maroon, that's where shelters operate, and so we sit at that booth at the EOC. And so from our perspective, we have three seats at the EOC, it's, it's the Chief of Police, is one of the captains, and we have an administrator sitting at the EOC, so that we, twenty-four hours a day, have a representative of the EOC that's feeding down into our channels at our shelters and our staff at our shelters, and part of the decision-making process at And I think one of the big improvements that the county made this, this year, responding to the communications issues we had in the past, is really solidifying the process of the timelines in terms of when a communication's going to come from the EOC, what's that going to look like? This kind of lays that out for our administrators as they're doing their training, but again, it's, it's certain times of the day, those times do not vary, and there are certain topics that are covered in every one of those meetings. And so this is a stat, this is one of the slides from their training that goes to our staff to make sure that, again, when those communications are happening, all the items on the agenda are flowing up to the EOCs, that we're all having the same information at the same time. And they really go into designation of type of information, right? If it's an emergency, what's an emergency mean? That's a call to the EOC at a different timeframe, but if it's non-emergency, and what does that look like? They come through these regularly, regularly scheduled briefings. So I think there's been some real improvement in the communications, not only up through the EOC, but then back down through both sides of the house, whether it's school board side or county side, so we're all on the same page. Let's talk a little bit about our district leadership team, so it's, I call it the coop, it's continuity of operations, right? What are we doing during a storm? And then if we have damage, what are we doing after a storm to make sure we can continue normal operations of the district? Again, we have our three EOC liaisons that are up, locked into the EOC during the entire event, they do not come out of the EOC, but then what are we doing here? That leadership staff is typically superintendent, it's the chiefs, COO, CFO, Director of Communications, that's kind of the core staff, and what are we doing with our staff to make sure we're all together in communications and as a team can make decisions based on what's going on during the storm, response to shelter operations? So depending on the type of storm, we have several options. Number one is the landings. If, if we do not have a strong wind event, if we do not have a big flood event with tidal surge, typically, that team's going to try and stage out of landings if possible, because all of our facilities are here, access to our computers, communications, everything's based out of here, we will do that. We also have STC. STC, we use the building right, currently right along Proctor Road. That building, if, if we got a big wind event, is higher rate of wind load, if we've got a big flood event, that's more protected over there. The other thing we like about STC is when the county response is, is running their crews to clear roads, that's one of the main, along one of the major, major transmission lines, it's also one of the main lines coming into the hospital, that gets cleared quickly, so it's a good spot for us. The drawback currently at STC is we have a generator sitting there, we rent that generator, but it only powers light and air, air movement, it does not power AC. And so we'll talk a little bit about more where, where we have generators, but that's one of the areas in terms of our response plan, that if we ever had to be multiple months in terms of catastrophic event that, that, you know, knocked the landings down or did significant to the damage... know, knocked the landings down or did significant to the damage, that would be an issue for us currently. The other area we have is Oak Park. Oak Park is not, it's not a newer set of buildings. It's not wind-loaded like STC in terms of its building capacity for wind load, but it is full generator capacity at Oak Park. So, as a, as a core team, depending on the type of storm, Oak Park is also an option for us, especially if we have to run extended payroll, finance, operations, HR operations during, during a major catastrophe. Oak Park could be an option for us because we have full generator capacity on that campus. And in department leadership, typically, they're in a department's running response to the storm unless, again, it's a significant event, strong category two, three, or higher, then we would bring Sarah Dan from Food Nutrition Services, people from facilities that got to be on staff, we'd bring them to STC to stage. So, in terms of training coordination, and this is one of the areas, we can always get better at this, again, is this is not our core responsibility. So, really, training and coordination of our, coordination of our staff, it's always trying to find chunks of time that makes sense that we can fit in the school year when we're not doing stuff part of our core business. But we really try to do as much as we can. That is really in collaboration with the county, because again, they are the experts in this, and so, we try to rely on them for much of the training. They now do coffee chats to start the year, and so, those have already happened. That's where they bring their shelter manager in. They come in and meet with our shelter manager. What they're trying to create there is a good working relationship, right? Because a lot of times at those shelter sites, the decisions are being made jointly. And so, those coffee chats are aimed at creating relationships, making sure we're refreshing for the year. Those have kind of happened everywhere. We always do an annual refresher training for all administration, and that just so happens to be tomorrow, we have a full-day operations meeting. We're talking a lot about safety and security. From 10:30 to 11:30, the team from the EOC is actually providing all of our refresher training for our principals and APs tomorrow. Our disaster assessment teams, I mentioned that earlier, that's a key aspect. They start training early, and I'll go through that in a minute. New administrators at a shelter site, if we have somebody who's a new principal at a shelter site, we have that at Lamarck this year, that is something where our team goes down and meets with them special. The county comes in and kind of, walks them through what that process looks like. So, that's already happened at Lamarck this year, and any new shelter site where we have new leadership, that's a focus for us to make sure that that principal or APs know what it means to be a shelter. And then, our special need sites, they get a lot of extra training, and that really comes focused through our health department and through the county. Generators. The column on the left is current sites that have generators. If it's a bold highlighted site, it's one of our shelter sites, and I've tried to note there basically what that generator runs. So, for example, we have very few sites that where the generator runs the entire facility, including HVAC. We have that at Tatum Ridge. We have that at Lamarck. There's a special needs. We have it at Cranberry. But most of ours run, if we do have a generator, they run safety lighting, they'll run the safety systems, but they don't run the entire campus. They may run air handlers to flush some air, but they don't run a cooling system. So, that's the column on the left. The column on the right at the top are two that we have in process. I mentioned earlier that one of the things that we were looking at is for our continuity of operations plan is, is setting up STC to be able to provide a place for us so long-term we could, we could house our administrative staff. That would include having to make sure we're running that AC. That's going to require two generators. We have applied for a grant with that particular project. That's about $7, $8 million project. The new K-8 that we're building in mid-county, we have to build a certain proportion of every new building if the county designates it as a shelter site. If they want to expand that capacity based on the capacity that we have as a county, they have to help fund that. And so, we've got funding from the county, and we've got funding from the state to increase the capacity for shelter occupants at the new K-8, and that is going to have a generator that runs life safety systems, not AC. And then, below that, you've got shelter sites that we currently have that do not have a generator. I've got those listed for you there. Most of them have hookups. And so, what the plan is, is that if we have to get into a situation where we've got extended stays, for example, at Atwater, where we're going to have people on campus for multiple days, then the county would order an emergency generator. We'd put it into that hookup, and again, we'd be able to supply power and air handler movement, air movement, but not AC to all of those sites. So, we've run shelter operations, and now, we're coming into, the storm has passed. What does post-storm assessment and recovery look like? That is really a focus on documentation and damage, and that's where our site assessment teams really are critical. We're also focused right away on how do we get back to normal operations as quick as possible? What schools are damaged, which are not, which can we get turned around quickly? And then, it's clearing our shelters out and cleaning our shelters to get those turned around. That is really the focus. The superintendent and the chief operating officer will be calling quickly to say, where are we with that status and how quickly can we get back to, to normal operations? And then, we always internally, and I think we've done a much better job of this in the last few years too, is an event debrief in the county, excuse me, in the school district with our staff, generate a list of concerns, both for our staff and then for county collaboration, and then we meet with the county and their staff and try and make sure we're addressing those. In fact, a year ago, when we had that collaboration, their list and our list was pretty much identical in terms of key learnings that we need to make improvements on. And again, as we talk about recovering in disaster assessment, where are we with damage assessment? We use an app called Survey 123. It's all online. The requirements for what we capture is, is super detailed, and so, this, I've got circled up there, that's the MACH assessment we went through a few weeks ago, maybe a couple months ago now, actually, with our assessment teams. Basically, this is on all their phones. This is an automated app where they go out, if they've got damage, they take a picture of the damage. It snaps a GPS location on that damage. We have to have that for FEMA reimbursement. That automatically gets uploaded into our work order system, and then, we're processing a work order and dispatching either internal people or many times contractors to go out and assess and start to repair the damage. But this is key to getting reimbursement, both from insurance and, and from FEMA. And so, that's, we train on that process every year. And again, it's a, if we have a downed tree, it's a picture of the tree, GPS coordinates on the tree, size of the tree, you know, it is super, super technical in terms of the documentation we have to have in place. And then, again, post-storm is we're closing. This is the checklist we kind of go through for closing sites, and again, we're trying to close shelters as quick as possible, and if we can't close every shelter, it's consolidation of shelters. So that if we have to house a few people longer, they move to a common shelter where we can do that, bring in some additional staff, and that allows us to start cleaning and prepping our other sites to get ready to get kids back in school as quickly as And with that, I've run through kind of quickly our process. Hopefully, I gave you a good overview. I would say in general, I think we've gotten much better over the last few years. I think the county's got a really strong team in place, and they collaborate with us and support us, and so, I feel very good about that. But this is really an area where we're constantly growing and learning, and every event's different, and hopefully, we continue to make those key, those key changes as we move forward to make sure our response supports not only the community, but getting ourselves back in operation as quickly as possible. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Kemp.
I just wanted to say that returning to normalcy is a priority, and I'll give credit where credit's due, and I've heard Rich Collins and others say, you know, in an emergency shelter situation, this is really about providing a lifeboat, not the love boat, right? And so, you know, anytime we have one shelter open, we can't, we can't open back up as a school and, and school districts. So, returning to normalcy is critically important for me, and trust me, Mr. Connor will be calling as soon as we can to get back to normalcy as soon as the event ends. I can't only imagine, I can only imagine what it was like to have 18,000 people show up. I mean, when, in the past, you had, you know, a couple, maybe a couple thousand district-wide or not even that much, but I think it's, when those events happen, that's why the work that started by, by you with the operations manual, former Chief Enos, hey, I'm telling you, it's a fluid document. It's going to continually change. We're going to continually get better. The work, the document, the detailed document for each site and what's in each site in the document, it will always change. It's always going to be a work in progress and moving forward. With that said, we'll open to questions that you might have regarding our preparedness.
Excellent information. Thank you. Questions, comments? Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you. I have two questions. Is the Red Cross still involved at all with our shelters?
Very little, very little. They, they sometimes come in and support a little bit after the event, but zero during the event. It's all staffing of all the shelters falls on county staff and our staff, and their involvement is sometimes very limited after the fact.
Okay, thank you. And then, by no means do I not want our community to be able to bring their pets, but how, what are the conditions of our schools after the pets and how much time and what all does that involve in cleaning up our schools after we've had the pets?
That's, that's a great question, and I will say that I think it depends on the numbers that we have in our facilities. And so, if we go back to the, to the event that Dr. Kemp referred to where we had 18,000 people in our shelters, we had, we had pets everywhere, we had people everywhere. That was a major cleanup. And because we just, if you go to our manual, we've got designated pet areas, and those are designated by typically the type of flooring, right? So, we're going into art rooms where we've got rubber flooring, we're going into lockrooms where we've got polished concrete. So, we're trying to put them in areas that make sense. But again, depending on the type of storm, we're never going to turn away anybody from our shelters, and so, we've got to do what we've got to do. So, I think if we, if we have a reasonable number of people we're staffed for where we're not inundated and we can, we can put them in the places that we have designated, we can recover from that pretty quickly, but it depends on the storm.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you that... You'll hear me saying the whistle off, they help me understand, and then, the fact that every, all, all the shelters are open at one time, that would help me understand that something is not normal, something is not... A constant happening or consistently happening district, district, along with shelter operations with pets. They're usually pre-identified, and I understand we, help me, we do it everywhere. So, we've been extremely over-accommodating to make sure that during an event, that we do our part as a community partner with the county to do that. So, there's some things, it's, I guess it's the Sarasota way. I'm learning that as we go. It's a great thing to be able to provide that while we can, and while we're able to staff where we can staff, we'll do our part.
Thank you. Sigler, did you say you had...
Can you go around to the...
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, having lived through Ian and being out in the field and being at the shelters, I, I can't say enough how staff just rose to the occasion. I never heard the word "no," ever. And, and bus drivers and administrators, everybody just got the job done, and I think it's exemplified in all the documentation that you have here and all the proactivity that you've put into this. And I, I'm grateful for, for the public that, that we have all of this in place. So, thank you. Keep up the good work.
So, I would, that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's a massive kudos, just seeing over the years, to Mr. Dumas's point, and the after-action reports, and each year continuously improving Irma was a massive wake-up call, but we were a dodged bullet, but we'd never seen anything quite like that. And I believe, just having worked with, in the risk management world and universities and large businesses, we are well above from a preparedness standpoint, and I think that is a testament to all the work that you guys do, and certainly, the county. We're very, very blessed to have Mr. Collins. He is known as a subject matter expert nationally, and so, there are definitely some oddities, particularly, I know the one was opening all of the shelters at one time, and it was really almost a confusion component, and then, being able to do the Tetris and capacity aspect of it. But just looking at this, one, I'm glad we're doing this. I think, you know, if, if, not that, I don't know who's watching, but I think it is important for the public to know what we have in place. I don't know, I know Craig does a phenomenal job, but if we are able to put out something short to the public to let them know all of these things, I think it's very helpful. But, you know, even when I think about the business continuity planning and the vendors, because it's a rush for anyone can get the debris pickup or whatever, so I love seeing that, how that circled, and I think, again, I think a lot of this comes back to the relationships that we have with the county. I'm glad that we have that relationship. That's not the case everywhere. And just reflecting on post-event situations, and you guys, I mean, there's not one thing that you didn't hit. Certainly, having heard from administrators, that's a, it's a very chaotic oftentimes feeling. It's very stressful. You have a lot of emotion when you have all these people who aren't, you know, normally, they're not our families and students, they're every member of the community, or they're from other places in the state, and it can be overwhelming. And so, I really appreciate to hear that you guys are really being proactive on training, certainly, new administrators, but that ongoing relationship with, or training for them so that they know they're supported, but also recognizing, having a plan on what that timeline looks like as far as if it's prolonged, because I think sometimes people often forget that those who are serving also have their own homes and all sorts of situations. I know we dealt with that here in our, in our county. And to Mr. Edwards' point, the heroes that come out of these stories, God willing, we don't have to deal with any kind of catastrophic storm, but it is really remarkable, and it's just a testament to the, to the heart of this community. And so, my hat's off to you guys. I'm just, I'm really, really extraordinarily impressed. I pray that we don't have to deal with this, but we live in Florida, and it's a reality. So, thank you. Great work.
Mr. Enos?
Thank you, guys, for the presentation today. I appreciate it. Just two, two quick things. One of the things I would recommend is if I could, get a copy of the operations plan sent to the board. I don't believe anybody's has ever seen it. It's really not that big of a document. I know that me and Jason, prior to 2019, there, there was about 20 different books instead of just one. We did an operations guide in order to bring it together, and it was continual looking into different things. One of the things I would ask is, and I did talk to Dr. Kemp a little bit about this, is to go back with Superintendent Connor, to go back to Rich Collins, which ultimately would go back to the county in reference to doing a staggered approach, again, back into the shelters, because that was something that happened at Sarasota due to a deficiency that happened in Sarasota that the county had gotten a professional correspondent that came in here, did an evaluation, and that was the recommendation. Prior to that, they did a three-tiered approach. I think that that's something at this point, since we have operational plans, we've got the personnel and the people, and we've been through some different storms, I think that is definitely something I'd like to see us to go to, because I, my understanding is about $1 million a day to open up each shelter. So, when you start looking at for the county as well as for us, as well as for people, that if we, God forbid, we ever do get anything that's a direct hit, which we haven't had one, and I've said it since 1969, Camille was the last one that actually was a direct hit in Sarasota County, other than the North Port that has come in and veered through Charlotte, you know, due to the Indian burial grounds and Englewood, as people would make reflection upon. But at the end of the day, if we could get a copy of that, if you could also go back and maybe open up at least some dialogue for next year in reference to the shelter, you know, just the opening of all the shelters, because I know that is an extremely tedious task for staff, especially for the people that are there, because again, we still have majority of our staff, you know, are, are, they're not first responders. So, then, when you start hearing about these terrible hurricanes, it's a Cat 5, a Cat 4, they're going to come, they also want to protect themselves and their family, then it gets in the circumstances of, you know, a lot of different potential that we need to make sure that, you know, we have those and that the staff is, is the real heroes, like everybody has said in this, as we move forward. So, on top of that, I think that it's, some of the changes that were made, I think they're excellent. And again, if we get a copy and go back, as I, the, the other thing too, is I know that, I know you brought the landings into play. I've been here where this has been underwater, and it's been a, less than a Cat 1, because we are literally a par five from the ICW. So, I would just make a recommendation that, you know, this really shouldn't be a contingency. I mean, then, it should be whether you want to do Oak Park, because it has air conditioning on a prolonged, if anything happened to us like happened up at Bay County, where they were shut down for months and months and months and months. Whether you want to do that or you want to do the STC, I would, you know, again, training to do that, I know that Mr. Overbay has done all of the housing for the staff there and the phones and everything that goes to, to make sure that everybody is safe and secure over there, as well as it's got a kitchen, it's got a shower. I mean, it's, I would just make the recommendation that the landings you probably shouldn't recommend on, because in, I think it was 93, the no-name storm, there was no siesta key. It was underwater. So, that would be my only recommendation, but I appreciate, you know, all of you guys, Jody, everybody, Chief, Jason, Dr. Kemp. I think that it's, you know, it's, the document's come a long way since the last four or five years. So, thanks, thanks again for that commitment, because our citizens, you know, should feel comfortable that our relationship with the county is that, that they're going to be taken[1787.36] be taken care of when they come to the shelters. So thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments. Excellent presentation, great feedback and reiterate and reinforce thank you for our partnership with the county and thank you to all of our staff and you as well. Great job. Superintendent Connor, if you'd like to introduce student meal prices, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, team. And as we transition, we're going to have a Director of Food Services, Ms. Sarah Dan, come up and talk about the need for us to evaluate our current meal prices and potentially to increase for the 24, 25 school year. So I'll hand it over to Ms. Sarah Dan.
Good afternoon. If I can get the presentation, please. We've had this conversation a lot over the last couple of years. Food Nutrition Services is continuing to see unprecedented meal price increases for the 2023, 24 school year. For example, food cost increases. This year, we've seen an 18% in the cost of food district-wide. Also, we've also seen Food Nutrition Services employees have received in last school year a 4% increase in salaries plus a 19% increase in benefits cost. For this current school year, obviously there's a question mark, because that has to go to negotiations, but we are anticipating a 12% increase in benefit cost. The other thing that's occurred this, this school year is the sunsetting of the U.S. Department of Agriculture's supply chain assistance. And that went from $2,000, $2 million the year before, we received $1 million this past school year, next year we will receive nothing. So.
And let me just, so in terms of setting the stage for, for the conversation about the costs of, of running the program, just for the information, the community, you know, Food Nutrition Services is 100% self-funded, right? And so basically, it's, it's like running a business out there, right? And so we've got the costs of labor, we've got the cost of food, that's the cost of the program and we have to generate the revenue, whether it's free and reduced lunch or whether it's paying, paying for meals to support the program. And so when we talk about these costs, that's really the baseline we're talking about. It's not funded from the general fund, it's not funded from the capital fund, it is based on revenue and the revenue has to cover the cost of running the operation. And so that's the conversation.
Absolutely. Okay. And just to give you some examples of some popular items that students like. For example, and this is 2020 versus the current, current school year, and we just recently received our market basket of what things are going to cost per case. So for some examples, burritos, in 2020, they cost $39, around $39 a case. They now cost $85 a case. Pizza, one of our most popular items. Whole grain, low-fat cheese has gone from $30 a case
[laughter]
to 70, almost $72 a case. Uncrustables, again, another, another, another popular item among students, $34 a case to 48. The large Uncrustables, a very popular item among our high school students, gone from $60 a case to almost $90 a case. Tater tots, 23 to 46. And the one thing that we're starting to see, which has always been kind of a staple and a thing that we've always encouraged here, is the increased cost of fruits and vegetables. And Sarasota has prided itself over the years of being able to provide fresh fruits and vegetables. Just some examples here, applesauce has gone from $17 a case to $32 a case and peach cups have gone from $39 to $52 a case. And again, as we had pointed out, that's supply chain assistance. So let's talk about salaries. And again, we want to pay our staff well, absolutely. The food service assistant, which is the basis of our entire department and the pay schedule, in 2018, they made $9.73 an hour, they've now gone to $15.22 an hour. So just some examples, someone that has had five years of service went from making $9.73 to $16.74. Again, that's a 72% increase. 17 years of service, $11.83 to $19.83. 24 years of service, $14.55 to $24, $24.04. The next one is just our managers. And our frontline staff throughout the pandemic and everything have really kept us going as a department. And so I, I love the fact that we're paying them well. So the starting pay, again, everything is based on a base salary for the department for eight hours a day and it's based on the number of meals they've served. So a school that serves over 1,200-plus meals a day, this is an employee that has had 26 years of service, in 2018 was making $25.83, they're now making $40.85 an hour. A school that serves 800 to 1,200 meals, 23 years of service, went from making $22 to a little over $35, again, a 60% increase. And 400 to 800 meals, which is the average size of our elementary schools, $20 to $33.98, again, a 69% increase. And obviously, the average increased cost of benefits per year, all employees in Food Nutrition Services receive full benefits. The health, which is our medical plan, went from $7,000 to close to $11,000. Cafeteria plan, which includes dental, vision, went from 500 to 1,000. This is just showing the comparison with other school districts. One thing I do want to point out is that the cost of living in Sarasota is significantly higher than some of our neighbors. Okay, thank you. I don't know if there's any questions. These are the proposed meal prices for the school year of this upcoming school year. For example, our elementary schools at breakfast, $2.25, that's actually district-wide, because the same menu is served district-wide. It only makes sense to charge everybody the same. In the case of elementary schools, lunch would be $3.25. Middle schools and high schools, again, they receive the same menu, $3.75. So just some next steps. Our department is going to continue to maximize HPS, that's our buying cooperative that we joined last school year. You voted to approve that. What that allows us to do is to work with other school districts to get the best pricing for the food that we're bringing in. It also, we receive rebates from the food that we do purchase from this buying cooperative. So we have actually added our produce under this bid currently to, again, to continue to generate revenue to offset our costs, making sure we're also covering the cost of additional programs. For example, the charter schools we serve, making sure that children's first, and then our catering program as well. Reducing waste, continuing to work on inventory control, making sure our production records accurately track, so that, again, we're minimizing our costs. Continuing to deep dive into programs that may be struggling. And then increasing our participation. As a school district, Sarasota's currently ended last school year at 51.4% free and reduced. We know that we're not capturing all of our free and reduced-priced students and so we will continue to work on, as we call it, feeding every student every day. So is there any questions?
Comments?
I know that there's been some discussion about the governor denying federal funding and I did a deep dive on it and I understand that we've never been connected to that part of the program, so I wanted to clarify that for the public. Can you explain that for us?
So that's in relationship to SNAP benefits and yes, the state of Florida did choose not to participate and so they did reduce that funding. Ours is, our funding is through the free and reduced meal programs and then the supper program, which is the after-school meal programs through the Department of Health. And then on national school lunch and breakfast, that is through the Department of Agriculture. One of the things that we always want to try to do in Sarasota is making sure that we are connecting our students in need to the programs that they're eligible for. And, and so we work really hard on really trying to do that, I think, district-wide. There's lots of partners trying to come alongside to make sure that we don't have kids out there that are going hungry. But again, as long as they're either filling out an application or directly qualifying for programs, they will receive food.
Great. And a quick question, the proposed plans are for the, also would follow through with the charter schools that we, that we service?
Yes, absolutely.
And lastly, speaking of those partners that are trying to work alongside of us, I know that I introduced Mr. Connor to Nell Miller at All Faith's Food Bank. She's very anxious, as you may know, already know, to be part of our conversation, to see what we can do in a, in a very large way. So I'm hoping that conversation and that piece of those conversations are, are moving down the field.
Absolutely. Those, those conversations have been occurring. I actually sat down with Nell, Nell, the All Faith Food Bank comes alongside us with our Summer Hunger Campaign and feeding kids in our community all summer long, whether during school, for the summer school, and then also our community sites. And so we sat down and talked about that. I know different community partners were getting together and having those conversations. How do we help our students? Because in the case of the school lunch program, it's based on household size and income. And we know that we have families out there, that their challenges may be a little bigger than just their income, with the cost of housing, food, everything that they may be facing. And so the Food Nutrition Services, I mean, we want to feed kids, no matter what. And so we're, we're excited that the conversations are happening. I really think, I, I think this school year, you're going to see some amazing things that our community and our school district's going to come up with to help our kids.
That's great. Just that moment when you said, we just want to feed kids, I'm, whatever you're proposing and whatever your recommendation is for, for the food cost, because I know if you could give it all away, you just would.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm on board with those, those new numbers.
You know, one of the other things that the community, and I think this is important to say as well, is in other states, there is funding to offset the meal costs. And one of the things that the many school districts throughout the state of Florida we often talk about, and some of that is because we have some of the largest school districts in the country here, is the fact that the cost of that may be cost prohibitive for Florida. Now, does that mean at some point the federal government will step in and so that, because tying nutrition to learning is such a critical piece, I mean, we're all speaking the same language with that, but knowing that well-fed kids are going to learn. And that's, that's our commitment. We want to make sure that we're providing that piece to, to help our teachers and our principals and our staff do the best by the kids in our community.
Well, thank you for your service. I mean, and you just exemplify making sure kids are ready to learn and, as I said before, if we could give it all away, we would.
Absolutely. And we have amazing team, so I thank them as well. Thank you.
Well, I thank you. I know you, you do an incredible job, so does your team. And I know over the last, certainly with the volatility in the last couple of years, to say the least, but what you have been able to come out of, and I think, thank you, Mr. Dumas, for highlighting that they are a self-revenue sustaining department. And if you know historically how you were able to come back out between supply chain and all the other issues during COVID and then still continuing to operate and support our community is extraordinary. So that's a large testament to, to your leadership. And, you know, when Mr. Connor and I were talking about this, I, my, I think all of us, we, he heard this, we're like, no, because we understand, all of us do, how hard it is right now, just go to the grocery store and makes me sick. I get excited when I, like, get under a certain amount and it's not very often that I do. And so I, but I also understand that on, on the operations side, there's a reality to that. So, you know, I had, I had asked a lot of questions, a lot of the information's provided today here, so thank you. And I also appreciate looking at a comparative to what other districts are doing. You know, I, I think that, you know, I understand that, you know, I was thinking, I think I saw Trip, when I think about the farm project and the different ideas that we have now, I understand perishable goods are more challenging and oftentimes, sometimes more costly for a variety of reasons, whether we're talking about refrigeration or just unused inventory. But have we looked at any expansion in that space where, and again, there's a cost there too, so I'm not diminishing that, but any, any beyond what we currently operate as and thinking kind of outside the box? One, I think just from a health standpoint, but two, really taking what our tools and knowledge and projects are, is there any way to recycle that or are we talking about anything like that?
Oh yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that we do try to do as much as possible with fresh fruits and vegetables is obviously source local produce. A lot of times, our community doesn't realize that even our milk is locally sourced. M&amp;B Farms is in Hillsborough County, those cows are right there. And so that company is strictly a K-12 company, so they service the child nutrition market, amazing partners, sustainability, really animal welfare, I mean, the whole nine yards, they're an amazing company. But we know that as we continue to recover and expand and navigate this, that we're hoping to do more, because absolutely, if we can connect with local farmers within the state of Florida, that's, that's a win-win.
Absolutely. Well, I love hearing that. And I know that's a larger project, I mean, a larger conversation, but I think of those things just in a multitude of, when supporting but also learning, but as, you know, I, I know it's painful and I understand and I don't want this to be lost on members of the community, that we aren't thinking of it that way, but you've highlighted all the demands and issues that really require us to do so. So you have certainly my support in that, in that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two things. Okay. Just because I know it'll probably come up maybe in public comments later today on your other districts where the breakfast has manatee and panelis that they're free, how are they able to do that?
So that's a great question. So in some cases, they have enough students and the high, the free and reduced percentages are high enough that they can offer it district-wide. I'll be honest, that's a goal that I would love to be able to do that. We do serve, we have quite a few schools that are high free and reduced that we automatically serve breakfast for free already. Some of our schools that participate in breakfast in the classroom, we serve them for free as well. And just this past school year, we switched a Heron Creek Middle School to a free breakfast program because it worked. And the goal is to eventually get there. Like as you had said, Ms. Ziegler, we, it's been, it's been a little bit of a rollercoaster the last five years and some of those goals have not come as, gone as quickly as I would like, but that is definitely a goal that we would love to get to.
But I just was real curious how.
They can do it because they have high, high enough free and reduced.
That makes sense.
Or they are able to offset the cost by participation.
Okay.
We're not quite there yet.
No, I, I understand, I get that. Also, I know in the past, when, usually it's our wonderful teachers who know when kids are not eating or clothing, whatever, and then, you know, goes to the counselor, to the social worker. Are those still, are those still in place?
Yes, yes.
So that the social workers can go to the home with the paperwork and are able to facilitate.
And, and we as a district are also really trying to make sure that all of those prongs within the school are communicating and not only on a district level, but also at the school site. So I believe we're going to continue to see just a greater effort in identifying those students, just because we know if they're struggling, we, you know, that, that's going to impact the teacher in the classroom.
Well, it takes everybody.
Yeah.
To make sure our kids get what they need. But also just at, for just a little, when I used to eat lunches here, back in the late 70s and 80s, lunches were $1.25. So when you look at, you know, their, that they're $3.75, that, that, that puts it in perspective. It's still the best deal in town.
Absolutely.
And the quality and the amount, so, you know, it's.
Yeah. It's definitely a nutrient-dense meal.
Yep.
And versus a, and I, and I don't want to ever diminish a, a family that desires to pack their own lunch, but we know that we can provide a quality nutritious meal. It's restaurant quality, our food comes from Gordon Food Service. A lot of times, people don't. A lot of times, people don't realize that. And we take it very seriously. There's three registered dietitians on staff, I'm one of them. And we, again, we want to, we want to provide a quality meal. We view every customer, whether a kindergartner or a high school student, they're a customer. And we want them to have a great, we want them to have a great dining experience and a nutritious meal.
Well, it shows, so thank you. Kudos to everybody, so. And I, not to add any more work, but if you could get that out to the public more, working with, you know, our communications, because they don't, they really don't know of what all that is offered.
Yes.
For kids.
Yeah, I was meeting with the principal yesterday.
It's definitely a not-for-profit vertical. I mean, if she had her way, like Mr. Edwards said, I mean, we could provide like we did during the pandemic, just feed everyone that we could during that time of grace and forgiveness. I think that's important. This is also a perfect example of furthering the conversations that we're having as a team. When talking about fiscal response and things we have to do to make sure that we're covering costs on a smaller scale, even though it's probably more significant than some of our capital project programs, this is a perfect example of how cost escalation, supply and demand has continued to impact organizations across, in every district in the state. And we have to make those adjustments to be able to provide the quality and level of service that this community expects.
Well, sometimes it's the only meal, breakfast and lunch that some of our students.
That's exactly right. Some of those, some of those schools you mentioned, you know, they're CPP schools, or they have, they have a large percentage of free and reduced lunch. If you get to a certain percentage prorated by school, it qualifies for free everything. So you know, one of the things, one of the strategies we can look at is making sure we're providing opportunities for all who would like to apply and qualify to do that.
Well, and we have a wonderful community, just like when we talked about the debt that so many from families could not pay for lunch. And a community member, one of our churches stepped up and paid for everything.
So just to give you an update on that, because we just finished, literally finished, kind of squaring the accounts, every student in Sarasota County will start this school year completely debt-free, which is amazing. And besides Grace Church, other community partners, we've had people step up and want to help kids. It's been, it's been amazing and just a real blessing to our children. And I, you know, something that I'm still at awe over.
And we always will feed the child.
Yes, absolutely.
Regardless of that ability.
Well, and that brings up, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I know we, I just, this has always been something, you know, when a student could not afford, they were given a peanut butter sandwich. Well, we know that's, that's can be pretty devastating when everybody else gets a meal. Have you worked on that?
Absolutely. That's funny. Christy, well, yeah, no, no. So one of the things that, kind of coming off of the free meals with the pandemic, on just different feedback from board members, different feedback, you know, could we do this better? And so we have taken a different approach to meals if a student is high-charged and be in danger, obviously with our elementary students. That alternate meal looks a lot different than it did back in the day. With our middle school and high schoolers, it does look a little bit like it used to, but at the same time, we want to catch it before it even gets to that, so that those students are identified. I just often think of this one student, one time before I was in the role of director, where I came alongside the manager, and what we realized is that the student was home, but there was no one else there. And this, this child was having a negative experience every time they went through the lunch line. But when we really digged in, digged into what was going on, there was so much more. And so we were able to get the student on meal benefits, we were able, the school was able to come alongside the child and get them the resources. So you know, sometimes our, the student's story is pretty powerful on what's really going on. Thank you.
So what I heard is, we're not using real cheese on our pizza. And secondly, I didn't see nachos on the list. Are we still serving nachos?
We are serving nachos. I don't know if you've seen, but there are some increased nutrition requirements that are coming to the National School Lunch Program. They're actually served once a month.
That's an outrage. That is an outrage. They used to be every Friday.
Chili, cheese, cheese.
Yeah. No, Sarah, Danny, you did an unbelievable job. You did a great job with it. I knew I always, you know, we talk about the stuff like that. I just say, you know, thanks for everything and the cost. Obviously, it's, you know, so cost prohibitive and a lot of stuff that we're doing there that, you know, for what you have, I really appreciate the hard work that your staff does, because I mean, I've seen them in action and I actually got yelled at, one of your staff members, because I gave out too many tater tots.
You say the same thing.
And I've had that, I've had that. So, but that's a true story. But anyway, I really appreciate you, so thank you for everything you guys do.
Mr. Dumas has the same messaging that happened.
It was macaroni and cheese for me. I got, I was serving too big of a portion.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize you and your staff for doing a phenomenal job and our school-based staff and administrators for being cognizant of the needs of all of our students. I can assure our community that they take care of every child, and a lot of that has been referenced here to make sure that they have food, clothing, power, electricity during the holiday. This is a phenomenal community, and it's also an opportunity to once again recognize, I'm glad you brought them up, Grace Church, who paid all lunch debt that has been collected for every single student in our school district, as well as community partners. And also mentioned Bill Nice, who facilitated that process. And thank you to all.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
And we're moving on, Superintendent Connor, to science adoption timeline.
You have. Michelle Anderson, come up to the podium to talk about our science adoption timeline.
Hi, good afternoon.
All right, good afternoon. So just to make some connections, we do have someone new on the team. This is Rosemary Schmidt, and she was formerly the vice principal at Venice High School, who now joins us as our new instructional material supervisor. So we're very happy to have her on our team, and very timely, because we're now in a new adoption cycle. And that's always fun and exciting. So she's getting in exactly when we need her. We are entering the year when we can adopt new science material. But just to let you know, we have not changed science standards. That has not changed in a very long time. That is not changing, but we are updating and refreshing our core instructional materials. And so that's what we're going to be entering the adoption cycle for. So I'm going to turn that over now to our curriculum director, Michelle Anderson, and our new supervisor, Rosemary Schmidt.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you. In front of you, you should have the draft timeline that covers what the steps will be following. As Ms. O'Day said, we are aligned to state academic standards. The science standards K through 12 have not changed. We are just in our new adoption cycle for textbook resources and materials. And we have entered into this timeline as the state released their final bid list to us on June 30th. And that way, we know which resources we can thoroughly vet with assurance that we would be able to purchase them once the vetting and adoption process is over. So this is our year of the adoption. And so we are here to share with you the timeline and as we move forward, so that we then can publicize it to engage our parent and community members in the process of our textbook adoptions as required by state statute. And so through the month of July, we'll begin putting it on our website to announce in our call for participation. We will then move to a school board meeting for public comment in August. And then when our teachers come back to campus, after they get settled in for a couple of weeks, we're going to be asking administrators and teachers to recommend to teachers from each campus to participate in the adoption process. For the elementary schools, it's going to be representatives from every grade level, because every grade level has their own set of science standards they move towards. At the middle school level, it's just two teachers from middle school. And at the high school level, we'll be focusing on getting teachers with the proper certifications to be aligned to the courses that the textbook will have to be adopted from. So that's what that will look like in form of our teacher committees. And we also will be asking for parent committee members to be a part of our textbook adoption process. Our vendors and publishers will do presentations, will talk about the logistics, will talk about how to vet the resources as they align to our academic standards and our rigor expectations for student performance and alignment to assessments, so that students are using instructional materials and teachers have resources in front of them to help all of our students maximize their science learning potential. I don't necessarily want to go through all every single date unless you want me to, but they're all there. But that's kind of the kickoff to the process. And it is a series of meetings and presentations and committee members coming together to discuss and evaluate the resources that the publishers will be providing to us. And then, once the committee gets their two selections down, they'll bring it to the board again. Those two selections will then go to school sites, where all the teachers will have an opportunity to review the resources. Voting will take place at the school sites through a third-party application, so that there's validity and reliability to the voting process. And then we'll move forward with what we want to offer up as purchase, and then continue that forward, so we can implement them for the '25, '26 school year.
Will parents or community members, will they submit an interest in participating through schools? And will there be so many, or is that done through the district? What can the community expect as far as participation? Is it school-based and chosen district?
So once we move forward with today's process, Mrs. Schmidt, we'll be meeting with our communications department to put the information available on our district website. And that's where parent community members can put their interest in to be a part of our committee process and to participate in the textbook adoption timeline.
Directly to the district.
Directly to the district website.
There'll be a forms document on the website that they'll be able to submit any interest.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for that. No comment?
Well, just on that basis, do we share? And again, I think our communications department has just evolved to extraordinary levels. So knowing that it's on the website, I don't think people go on the website all the time to just check what's going on. So hopefully, we have some function of pushing it out to the community so that they know to go there. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, just for a point of clarification.
I would, I would think through our social media outlets and those kind of things, yep. Yep, school newsletters, like back to school, welcome messages, those kind of things.
But we're really going to use our new rooms platform. That is amazing. Once all of our students load into that platform, it's very seamless on how principals and teachers can send reminders out to different groups within the school. So we'll also utilize that.
Excellent. Okay.
Any questions? All right.
Okay, great.
Okay.
All right.
Well, and that's what it was for, is mainly for informational purposes, not necessarily a decision.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
So we appreciate that. We'll transition now to our last topic, which is the college and career and life readiness update, along with our School Links platform and the progress that has been made, some aggressive progress that has been made over the last year. So we have Ms. O'Day, Dr. Rhonda Pillow, Mr. Trip Jennings here to present on CCLR, and Amy as well.
Amy Earl, yes.
Amy Earl.
And as you know, this is, I think, just a point of pride for our district. There's been a lot that has been offered and grown to this point with CCLR and CTE. We have some really great models within both of those categories, within the work and scope that this team does. But what's even more exciting is what's to come. So we have really great things happening and really great things coming. So they're going to be sharing the great things they've been doing, where we are with some of our new projects that are coming to fold going into the next two school years, and just information regarding what we know about our students and the programatics that we connect to the data-driven decision-making that this team is engaging in. So very proud of that work and looking forward to them sharing with you here this afternoon.
Well, thank you, Ms. O'Day, and thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Connor, for this opportunity to share where we're at and to kind of give you an idea of what your support has produced as an impact to the Sarasota County schools. As you know, we've leveraged some of the momentum we had in the past and now have actually built a strong foundation for moving forward, which Mr. Jennings and Dr. Earl will share in a moment. But it's all because of that continued support in each of your individual ways, the way you support not only the K-12 side, but the post-secondary side as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jennings to get started on showing you what the fruits of our labor has been.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you and provide updates. CCLR, college, career, and life readiness. We've all heard that phrase. We all have some idea of what that means. So does every other district, every other county, every other state. But we want to describe what does it mean for Sarasota County schools. So we're going to share what we are doing currently, how it aligns to our new strategic plan, and what kind of data we are collecting and using towards students graduating with a plan and beyond. So you can see the graphic, every student has a unique path after high school. All of our paths were probably different in some way, but where did we all end up? In a job, in a career. So part of our CCLR vision is to educate students and parents about careers, so that they can be equipped with the right knowledge and experiences to make an appropriate decision for what they do after high school that's best for them, and sometimes a realistic Our previous strategic plan really laid the groundwork for what we are going to do moving forward with our new one. Through our previous plan, we have career advisors in all of our middle and high schools. We have career centers in all of our high schools. We have a online personalized career planning platform, selected, School Links. Dr. Earl will talk about that shortly. And we locally defined college-ready and career-ready. That's another one of those, we want students to graduate college and career-ready. What does that mean? So we have a definition here locally of what that means. So our new strategic plan, that'd be pillar one, priority four, where our CCLR efforts fit within. We want everyone to graduate with a plan and to start kind of deciding their unique pathway, starting in middle school. And then that evolves with them as they go grade to grade and move forward, and then finally graduate. We want to enhance our career centers at all of our high schools, so that they all share the same baseline services. I don't, we don't want there to be, if you go to a certain high school, you get certain CCLR services versus another one. We want there to be consistent services provided at all of our schools. And we want to increase work-based learning participation. That's where students engage with employers in connection with earning credit towards graduation. So that's internships, on-the-job training, practicum experiences, clinical rotations, and pre-apprenticeships. And then finally, through our new strategic plan and our online platform, we will be gathering personalized student data on their career interests, their college interests, so that we as staff and as parents can best support their post-high school plans. So what are we doing in the elementary level? We want to, at the elementary level, focus our career education on awareness. We're not trying to make a second grader decide on a career, but we want to at least turn the light bulbs on about what is out there, increase their awareness. Junior Achievements Biz Town is a place up in Tampa that several of our elementary schools visit, where students get to play the role of employees and really kind of get a taste, a glimpse of adult life. They can be consumers and see what a budget is. It's a very cool experience. Part of our new strategic plan is to kind of design our own local version of that. We focus on digital literacy in a lot of our tech classrooms in our elementary programs. We all, we're in a digital age, and you know, we don't know what's coming forward with AI and computer science, so we're trying to get some of those baseline principles in our elementary school students' hands now. Take Your Child to Work Day, I encourage all families to participate in that event. That is a child's first job shadow, essentially. So it gives them a glimpse of maybe what mom or dad do for a living. Speaking for myself, my son Ben just finished third grade at Brentwood. And through all third grade, he helped them with their BWN, Brentwood News. And so he helped on the production staff. And he came to work with me this past year, and we went and visited our communications department's production studio, where he learned that he could get paid to record and produce videos. And that kind of blew his mind. So perfect example of awareness, increasing awareness at the elementary level. So at the middle school level, our career education is focused on exploration. That's where we start to infuse career advisors at the middle schools, where they bring in employer guest speakers. And we have a CCLR scope and sequence that is mostly done through our School Links platform, starting in sixth grade. Starting in sixth grade, students start to build out their personalized profile. They fill out interest assessments and they're tagged with, okay, these types of career clusters might be good for you, these types of career pathways. So they start to build out their profile. We have CTE courses in our middle schools, engineering, robotics, computer science, coding, computer applications at all of our schools. We have career and technical student organizations, like Technology Student Association. We have one of those chapters at every middle school where students compete and they learn those employers sought-after soft skills or essential skills like teamwork, communication, confidence, resiliency, and so forth. Shout out to our four schools that sent chapters to our TSA Nationals competition last month, Northport and Riverview High, Woodland and Sarasota Middle. We had 19 teams placed in the top 10 in the nation. So very, very exciting, some good stuff going on in our student organizations. And then at the high school level, our career education kind of focuses towards concentration, where we want to provide students with clear CTE pathways that they have the potential to participate in all four years of high school. We have career advisors at every high school, and we have career centers. We have a scope and sequence fueled by School Links, where students, again, continue to cultivate their career profile, and it adapts every year as they grow and their interests change and their skills grow. We have some annual career-themed events. I'll speak on in a moment. We have CTE pathways, like I said, at high schools, 33 different pathways among all of our schools, including STC dual enrollment options. They cover 14 different FLDOE career clusters. We have roughly 10,000 students on any given day in a CTE class, which is almost 50% of our students, grade six through 12, are in a CTE class on any given day. This past year, over 3,000 industry certification credentials were earned. That was the highest ever. Very interesting, the bar graph showing our industry cert attainment since inception in 2009, up through COVID, and then we've bounced back and gone even higher. So very, very exciting there. A lot of those industry certifications articulate for college credit, and they are not Florida Department of Ed written, they are written by industry. They are adult-level credentials from companies like Microsoft, Autodesk, SolidWorks that are recognized in industry. At the high school level, we also have work-based learning opportunities for students to engage them with employers. Dr. DePillo will certainly speak on STC shortly, but this past year, we had a record-high number of students apply for dual enrollment at STC. So you can kind of see the trend moving towards career education. The photo shown there is a Booker High School student with our own construction services staff member, Steve Clark. That was shot from, our human resources department have set up a job shadow program called Building a Bridge for Hire, where high school seniors sign up and shadow a staff member of Sarasota County Schools. We have so many different jobs, other than teachers and administrators, that a lot of students probably don't even know about. This past spring, we had about 40 students shadow in departments, construction, finance, food nutrition, student services, and IT. So we're hoping to increase that participation as we move forward. Couple of our career-themed annual events that we have. We do about three a year of Experience Career Lunchens, where we have over 150 juniors and seniors dialogue with about 30 local employers from a specific career cluster in small group rotating discussions, and we feed them lunch. We've covered the clusters of engineering, health, IT, and hospitality. This coming fall, we are going to add agriculture into that one. And then we have our Career Skills Challenge events. That one started years and years ago as the STEM Smart Student Summit. It has evolved into the Career Skills Challenge. It got so much participation, we had to separate a middle school event and a high school event separately, just because of capacity. And so in those events, roughly 200 students participate in 12 different career-themed competitions that are judged by local employers, where they receive immediate feedback from industry. And we know for a fact, multiple internships and jobs have resulted from these types of events. Employer engagements, that's kind of what we're talking about. There are multiple ways that local employers engage with our students. Got a list of them there. Any given year, roughly 250 different local employers in some capacity are engaging with our schools and students. And that's not talking about the ones who pay to have their logo on the car pickup line. These are ones that are hosting an intern, or coming in as a guest speaker, or bringing group through their business for a tour. So part of the new strategic plan's key performance indicator goals is to increase the number of students that graduate with at least one work-based learning experience. So again, work-based learning is when it's tied to high school credit. This is not the number of students who have part-time jobs. I'm sure that number is way higher. This is when it's tied to graduation towards high school. So class of 23 is when we first started looking at this data at the district level and at the school level. 22% of that graduating class graduated with at least one WBL experience. This most recent graduating class, 25%. And I will say that number increased, but it was not due to any strategic increase of WBL marketing. We have yet to do that. So I only see that number going higher. But that's the goal. We want students to graduate with some kind of employment experience, even if it's to say, that's a career I definitely don't want to do. That's just as valuable as a WBL experience that they do enjoy. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Earl.
All right, so to continue with the, you know, good feels, up on the screen, you can see the joy that's being spread at graduation time, which all of you attend multiple graduations. And so you see it from the big kid's side, but you can also see that we have started a tradition of path parades district-wide. And so that inspires our youngest learners to visualize what a real graduate looks like, and that graduate went to that elementary school. And so it's really an impactful moment, and it celebrates all of the paths, not just college. And it shows, and it kind of normalizes all of the paths. Like, it's okay, as long as you have a plan. And so that's kind of the messaging that we're doing with our elementary schoolers. And so a huge shout-out to not only our high school administrators, but also our elementary administrators that allow that to happen on their campuses, because that's a big lift to have. I think when I was at Tatum, which is the picture on the far left, I think there are over 50 graduates there. And so that's a lot of returning students and their moms and dads and brothers. And so it's a lot of people. But moving forward, how did they get to that plan? And what are we doing? If you'll recall, in 2022, we started using School Links after Ian, I believe, because we wanted it to happen before that. And the weather, you can't predict the weather. And so the weather kind of stopped us from starting in September, and that's okay. But what it offers to us is a lot of different pieces. So students can, do you know their career cluster of interest? And like Mr. Jennings said, they are taking research-based assessments. They're called other things because kids don't care what the research is behind the assessments. They just want to, what's my personality type? Well, other celebrities have that personality. What career clusters are good for that? So it does that, and we do ask students to redo that every single year, so that when their priorities change, or they just grow up, or they grow out of something, that they have that. And it's always open, so they can retake it as many times as they want. But we have that historical knowledge, and their parents can see it as well. And so they will also create career goals eventually. We don't, again, want them creating goals for careers too soon. We want them to know what's out there before they set a goal for themselves. We will ask them their post-high school plans, starting in eighth grade. So starting in eighth grade, we kind of use sixth and seventh grade, let's look at all of the clusters, let's see what that means, let's talk about what is the economy doing, what is the future of jobs, and will that job still be a job by the time you graduate, and those sorts of conversations. So starting in eighth grade, they can make a plan. Again, they're not married to it, they're not locked in, they can change it whenever they want, but that's when we start tracking their plan. And once they get to high school, then we're looking at those colleges of interest. Fun fact, they can favorite colleges. Counselors can go into the platform and suggest colleges for particular students if they know that they're interested in a certain major. And parents can also go in and recommend that they look at a certain campus. And if the student chooses, they can write, I know, I know, we're treading on thin ice here with some high schoolers. But if they choose, they can also write why they like each campus. And so we want to make sure that the reason that they like the campus is programmatic and towards a career, not athletics. And sometimes they will click athletics, and that's fine if they're going to be an athlete. But we also want to have a little taste of reality, they should have the major that you want, if you're going to go to a four-year school. So all of those things are kind of in the platform. And when it comes to that senior year, that junior and senior year, really, the scholarship database opens as well. So students can put in information about themselves, and it will kind of curate a list of what scholarships are you actually eligible for. Because there's nothing more irritating, and I think back to like my days when I was looking for scholarships, like, don't qualify, don't qualify, this is, like, okay, none of these apply. And so School Links kind of sifts through that and kind of recommends and has a running newsfeed, if you will, of what scholarships are available to them. We are also tracking work-based learning through School Links. So the employers are verifying hours, they're doing evaluations, and they're even putting on their, hey, we need volunteers, hey, we need this. And so it's really a one-stop shop for students and for parents to see, like, oh, you need a part-time job this summer. I saw the YMCA, well, I guess it's not the YMCA, but you know what I mean. They're hiring, and so there are all sorts of opportunities available at their fingertips. They are also building a resume and adding their credentials every single year. That's part of the scope and sequence. So starting in eighth grade, were you in a CTSO? Did you go to TSA Nationals? Like, add that, and it rolls over every single year. So by the time they hit senior year, or this time for our rising seniors, they can start curating, what do I want on that resume for colleges, and what do I not want? And then finally, we have School Links building out that career-ready and college-ready tracker, like Mr. Jennings was talking about. And so ultimately, we can look back after we get AP, IB, ACE scores, because those all come after graduation, and say, the class of 2024, I would say by December, we would have the class of 2024's data and say, this percentage of students were college-ready, this percentage of students were career-ready, this percent of students was both. And so that will kind of give us a baseline of, and that's based on our local definitions of where are we and how do we kind of move the needle on that. And so that's all well and good if this happens during the school day, but what happens at home? I will tell you, since June 1st of this summer, we have had 852 students log in on their own fruition. And today is July 16th. So, I mean, that's not terrible. They are going in there. What are they doing? They are doing college research, a lot of them. So a lot of them are rising seniors, which is great. A lot of them are taking assessments. They are favoring careers, and they are setting goals. And so on the staff side, we can see what is it that our students are doing. And so I log in every day just to make sure no one's asked me for anything, and that's kind of what they're doing. So how do we use the data? Well, like Trip was talking about, those luncheons, I will send out, like, we're having the engineering luncheon, here's the list of students at your school who have said that that's their career cluster of interest. So let's target them first and kind of let them have that opportunity. So we're really trying to curate their experience and enhance, or say, never mind, let me take that away, I don't want to do engineering after that, so that we can get them involved in work-based learning, in luncheons. And also eventually, I would love that to impact scheduling, to make sure that we're getting students the level of education that they deserve, just because PE is fun, but they don't necessarily need three sections of it senior year, right? Like, let's get them off-campus then and get them there. So that's kind of what we're doing with the data. We're also identifying how to increase engagement. And so that's not just at the school level, like I talked about, but also at a community level. So how do we make sure that our students are getting these wraparound services? And so what I will say is, I am working with the Boys and Girls Club and Take Stock in Children, who work with their mentors and their staff members on site, so that when those students are there after school, they at least know what the platform is. They don't need to log in, but they can coach these students through and be like, show me your profile, show me this. So that really, it's not all on us, it's on everyone. Everyone that touches the students knows about School Links and how to access it and how to create opportunities and create discussions. And so how are we elevating and collaborating? Well, we already kind of talked about the jobs, but we also want to talk about scholarships and the alumni accounts. And so a big push this year for our seniors was, before graduation, create your alumni account, because we've already paid for it, and the alumni accounts are free. And so ultimately, what happens is they put in their own personal email, so we no longer are responsible for what they do with their account, but they can then log in and create their own alumni account, they can update what their job is, they can look at our scholarships that we have posted, because I do post some that are after, not only for high school seniors, because you never know when they want to go back. And so ultimately, the Pollyanna in me wants to say, and then they'll come back and sign up to be a career speaker, once they're doing what they're doing, and really kind of give back to the community. So with that said, our rising freshmen created plans, like we said, those eighth graders. And so this is what their plans look like as of now. So our rising freshmen, their plan after high school, 81% of them plan on more education, which is amazing. It's interesting to me to look at that workforce piece as well, because that's 13%, and I think that that's a huge opportunity for all stakeholders to explore. So families, okay, what part of the workforce are you going to? That's great, let's talk about it. Students, again, let's talk, and how do we make it happen? How do we make sure you're credentialed? How do we make sure that you are getting into the workforce the way that you envision getting into the workforce? Again, that can also be a discussion for counselors, career advisors, as well as our community. So if you are a community member watching this right now, and you would like to get in front of these students and say, we're hiring, we would love to have you, please reach out to your local school so that you can come and speak to those students, because showcase your options, because students don't know about all of the jobs available. So moving to the 11th graders, the rising 11th graders, well, let's go back for a moment. So let's look at those career clusters of the ninth graders, the rising ninth graders. They want audio and video technology, business and engineering, those top careers. They want to be really rich, which, good for them, I want that too. Yes. So professional athlete, lawyer, and doctor. So when we move on to the 11th graders, we see that the career clusters have changed a little bit. AV is still there, business is still there, but health science has kind of taken the lead. But also, the change in that pie chart in terms of how many students want to go to post-secondary school has grown by 6%. So it went from 81% to more education to 87% of more education. And so I'm not sure why it looks like that, but my best guess would be because now they have had more experience in more rigorous science and math exposure. So now they see, okay, I can do it, that's something that I can do, and that makes a lot of money, because that's still, you know, influential. So it's interesting, but again, that's me making an assumption about why those have changed. So let's look at the class of 2024, our graduates. This is realistic data. So we asked seniors, again, before they graduated, what are you doing? Where are you going? What are your careers and all of that? So we landed with 80.2% of our class of 2024 is planning on more education, which is incredible. That's an 8% jump also in that two-year or tech college. So if you look, that's a big, it's a big change, which is great. And so I know Mr. Jennings already talked about that huge dual enrollment piece at STC, but I also think it's about exposure and knowing that that's okay. And we're kind of changing the narrative of, you're working, you're doing something, you have a goal, and that's kind of the key. And I will say, the World Economic Forum, they come out with kind of a report every few years, and they are anticipating 3 million jobs for vocational education teachers in the next four years. So they are anticipating that that's going to take a big jump, those two-year and technical colleges, and that students are going to go that way as opposed to the four-year. We also had a jump in the workforce, but let's take a closer look at that 80% and what that boils down to. And I know this is going to be a pride point for some of you, but... And I know this is going to be a pride point for some of you, but before we start, before we start, I do want to acknowledge everyone who has a relationship with a senior. And it doesn't matter what that relationship is, it's a huge undertaking to get students graduated. It's also a huge undertaking to get them not only applying to college, but enrolling in college. And so that is a ton of work. So thank you to all of those people. We had over, I thought we had the number, oh yes, over 662 unique institutions applied to by the class of 2024. That is a lot of colleges to be applying to. We had over 5,000 acceptances, $18.8 million in scholarships, that does not include Bright Futures. That money has not been confirmed yet by the state. And so, once we have that, we can update if you would like. And the average senior had about 3.8 applications. In terms of enrollment, huge shout-out to SCF. We have a lot of students, 481 to be exact, that are going directly enrolling into SCF. And so that is really important to know, that a lot of our students are staying in state, which is great. All of, a lot of them are here. I also want to talk about how do career advisors use this information? Well, that helps them kind of study up and brush up on what do they know about these schools? Because if a student wants to go to a school just because their mom went there or their dad went there, but it doesn't have the program that they want, we want to make sure that the career advisor can do that, but that they also have a relationship with the rep, so that we can get reps coming in. Or if a student has a question about an application, they can pick up the phone and they don't have to wait on hold, I'm just going to say UCF, for 30 minutes, right? They have a direct line and they can get questions answered. And so really, it, it's about creating meaningful relationships, not only with those institutions, but also with the students and making sure that they know about all of the opportunities available for them. So speaking of campuses, let's talk about everyone's favorite campus, STC.
Thank you, Dr. Rollin. Thank you again, board members and superintendent for the support, because it all come, it all comes together really quickly when a student is walking across the stage, reality sets in, and they need to have that plan. I know we talked to several board members about, how do we know if they have a plan? I saw the list of colleges up there, STC's not one of the top five yet, but as we keep working hard, we're going to get there. And to Mr. Enos's future or past points, Sarasota is a leader in the state in terms of innovative ideas and trying to make things happen. We're not following many people. We've been identified as a career dual enrollment success. And that's because of the board and transportation, basically, that you are, you know, dedicated to provide that transportation. And what it does is it opens up the door for those high school kids. So even though we're a post-secondary institution, almost 40% of our students are high school students from our high schools. So we're both. So your support is very appreciated. As you see, we have many campuses across trying to leverage as much of the real estate in Sarasota as possible. We're looking forward to capacity increment down the road with that support of the expansion in Northport and the FIRE Academy. That'll allow us to open up even more opportunities for our high school students, which right now, we're kind of constrained. We did have the largest number of interest-level applicants for dual enrollment, and we were only able to take 70% of them because of the capacity issues. Remember, we are an adult facility, if, we cannot be a totally a dual enrollment facility, but the tuition that comes in from the adults really offsets some of the costs that we have for our high school kids. So with the capacity increment in Northport and leveraging the evening hours, we're going to try to increase that dual enrollment opportunity. But our latest COE report, which is our Council of Occupation Education accreditation, you'll see our completion rates are at 80%, placement rates are 89, and then licensure rates at 99. And that's in-house programming. And some of those numbers, you'll say, okay, how do you get 99% licensure rate? It's only on those students who complete. So it's not all the students involved. So as they complete the program, then they go to licensure, and it's only the state licensures that we're looking at, not necessarily just industry certifications. Again, you're very familiar with the programs, we've spoke to them many times. Those clusters of programs that we generate are, from our advisory groups, local employers who are advocating for, hey, we need more workforce talent in these areas. We continue to work with different professional organizations to make sure our curriculum is aligned with the needs of the community and their, what they're doing in their facilities as a, as an industry leader here in Sarasota. So we try to match that. So one of our customers is, of course, the employer, the other customer is our student, and we try to marry both together and both make it a happy arrangement, so that each person that finishes our program are well-equipped to become one of the better employees that that industry has. So some of our outcomes recently, our enrollment career certificate programs is about 1,785 kids. ESOW-GED, that's another 2,100 students. Now, that's adult ESOW. That's not, generally speaking, of our high school ESOW. These are professionals that come from out of the country, who want to learn a little bit more about the culture of the United States, learn a little bit of language, learn how to communicate, interact with the United States, and they become very productive citizens locally here. GED, of course, is that, you know, graduate equivalent diplomas, diploma, that we try to offer our students so that they can get a foothold. When they've maybe had offsets in high school, ninth, 11th, 12th grade, now they can come back and get their GED and then be successful. And then we try to roll them right into a program at STC. Apprenticeship, that's one of our larger numbers we've had, is 447. Many of them are in the trades, some of them are fire, firefighters apprentice, but that apprentice program is the model for the work-based learning. Everybody learns better when they're apprentice. You're learning hands-on, right from the expert. You learn your didactic work at night and you learn your work-based learning experiences during the day. It's applied learning, directly related to improvement and retention. Job placement, you'll see the constructions trades, we put into the workforce infused 101 employees, auto marine services, another 43, fire EMT paramedic, which is in a huge demand, 115, and then, of course, nursing and is just a C, CNAs and LPNs, 122 this What's next? And I know Mr. Jennings had spoke about the Lorraine School and having that opportunity for Bridges for Employment. That's a STEM-focused group, school. We got, we're talking about some great partnerships with Moat Marine, comp science, engineering, robotics, maybe underwater drones, maybe some other things with Moat Marine, which is very interesting. Wellen Park is on the books. Again, we talked about ag, comp, computer science, multimedia, computer science has a little AI involved in there, engineering, hospitality. Again, another great build and a great opportunity for students in that area to have some career technical experiences. The farm renovation, thank you very much again for your support in the farm and the renovation there. It is another state model, and if Kate was here to speak about it, you'd need another two and a half hours, three hours, because it is very engaging how ag has changed, the tech in the STEM-iness of it and where it's going. Not only with, I mean, the drones, the tech, the biotech, the, the, everything that's involved in agriculture right now is way beyond digging dirt. So we can't wait to see that as it comes to fruition. And then, of course, our, the commitment you've made to the FIRE Academy and the Northport expansion is greatly appreciated, and not only by me as one of the leaders, but the whole team. We've, we have assembled a really good, solid team, and they're trying to make me look good and I'm trying to make the superintendent look good, so that you all look good here on the board because of what we're doing daily in, in the trenches. So thank you again for all of that. And I think if you have any questions, I hope you do, because we have plenty of information to share. Again, thank you, team, for a nice presentation, and thank you, Ms. O'Day, for your support.
A lot of mine are comments, but anyway, I think it's just incredible, me coming from a former high school teacher all those years ago, and then basically ending my career in counseling, of how far you've come, but also how things really go back. And I just have to say this, if, if some people would let the experts guide things, we might not be in such a shortage in the career education in our builders, electricians, because we all did the warning and here we are. But, you know, that, sometimes you feel like, what do we know, right? So anyway, I think it's wonderful, and I, going through your presentation, when I was an elementary counselor, doing the career education at Southside and the awareness and helping start the career advisors at the high school and how far they've come through the middle school, it's just amazing. And I think with all our staff at the schools and, and how everybody works together. And I think, I have one question. I was curious, because you know, it used to be a big, a big deal, you know, take your child to work, and how are we going to, as a district, record that attendance? So it's like, because you know, it was kind of like, no, but now that you've tied that in, that makes perfect sense. And it's like, why did that take so long to make that connection? And I put myself in that too. So how, how do you record that now? Do you know how that's recorded by attend, because it?
I'll answer that. So what we do is we typically send out a letter out to all of our families that includes a permission slip. So when they return that, that's our record that they're participating in that. And they're excused, yes.
Okay, great. And I just think, just at, Dr. DePillo, when you invited me to that, the career, and when the electrician was talking, and, and I was talking to him after, and he told me to call him, because I had bought a new light fixture. So I called and had an appointment scheduled, and it was one of Sarasota County stu, former students that came. And of course, I bought the wrong kind of light. So he's explaining to me in detail why this will not work. And you know, my eyes are about ready to roll back at my head, because I'm thinking, well, how come I didn't know that? And when he ended, he goes, do you have any questions, Ms. Marinelli? And I said, no, you've really explained, and I, I promise you, I will not make that mistake again, because now I got to take it back. So it, it comes, it full circle. So I just think you've, everybody's done a wonderful job, so please extend my appreciation to all.
The, the difficulty we have is that finding those instructors, we've done a really good job of finding the right instructors to carry that message, to have the passion, because they're not truly, they're not trained as educators, they're trained as tradespeople mostly. Many of them come back, and then so there's that little bit of a lift that we have to get to, so they can understand how to convey their skill sets, so that they learn and that the students absorb it. And our trades guys are doing a great job. We honestly, all the way down from administration down to the classroom, we have the best team ever that we've had.
Well, I tell you, the, the one gentleman, when some of the kids made the fatal mistake of, while he's talking, they're on their phone, and how he handled that versus like a teacher, it made much more sense, because I tell you, that, that, those few kids, they went, those phones went down, they went, their posture went straight up. It's like, he didn't, he didn't play. And I thought, that, that's a life lesson, you need to know. You can't do that when you're in the workforce. But anyway, kudos, thank you.
Well, just awesome job. I think it's, I think you just can look at all the work that we're doing there, and I know that I, they just cleared the land for the new hospital down there in Wellen Park. So as soon as we can get that South County expansion rolling here, I know that they're going to be in demand. I know Northport's setting records for growth and it's, you know, especially living down there, that, you know, this, this program is going to be huge with the FIRE Academy, and especially is going to be huge in reference to the, the law enforcement piece of trades, especially at the nursing going in down there. And just kudos for everybody and their hard work. I think it's pretty amazing, if you look at it, you know, then you add in the, you know, especially as a parent, when you really look at it and it's, you know, no cap to get your cap, I got that right this time. And then you look at all the other stuff that you guys are doing. I mean, really, if you look at our seniors, to be able to graduate, to be able to have 80% to go on to college or post-secondary, looking at the trades, looking at the military, looking at, I mean, we really are giving like no other time, if we've given these people and parents an opportunity to have their children make choices and direct them in a position, because all of the resources are, are really come together. And I think that's really what's, really what's amazing for all of that. And I look for a lot of, a lot more great things, I think especially are going to be coming down the pipe. So, so thank you guys for everything.
Wow. That's a lot of happy, I feel like a proud Papa, actually. From when I got here, I think many of you've heard me say enrolled, enlisted, or employed, and every student should graduate with a plan. So to hear it really come to life, I remember, I'm looking at Mr. Renoff, I remember sending him an email about, hey, I just ran across this new software called School Links, and what do you think about it? And he said, oh, I'm going to send it off to STC and, and see what they think. And, and wow, the, the transition from School Links to, or from Naviance to School Links. One quick dumb question. I know that Venice High was so married to that DOS program with Rotary, is it, is that transitioned out? They're all on School Links?
Their students are applying for college on School Links. I'm not sure if they're still using that platform, but we definitely have all of our, all of the scholarships we are aware of are being uploaded.
Awesome. And speaking of Venice, there was, I want to say it was in May, maybe, I think it was May, they, SMH did a, a, a presentation of a car accident on, on campus with, they had the Jaws of Life getting the dummy out of the car, there were 80 juniors there, and they airlifted, they brought the helicopter in. Think about what SMH, the extent that they went to, the expense they went to, to show these 80 students. But I, I spoke to David Vernder afterwards, and I said, David, there were 80 students there, and I asked the question, does everyone know what they're doing when they graduate? And no one raised their hand. I said, are you 80 students going to be in healthcare? And they all raised their hand, which is exactly what your data was showing, is that they're in medicine, they haven't figured out exactly where they're going. And so I wanted to share with you that that was a very practical, real experience from that. And I love the fact that, and I know we talked about this four years ago, can we start it in middle school? And at the time, we didn't, weren't doing a whole lot of that at all. And here, the program has really come to life. You guys have, have really just knocked it out of the park. One last thing, I know Dr. DePillo and I talked about this, and I love that you have an alumni account, because I think it's something like one-third of kids that graduate with a plan don't finish their plan. Something happens to their life, something happens that they have to go, that they can't complete that plan. Aside from the alumni account, and I know this is a challenge, because Dr. Kemp keeps reminding me, we can't do everything because we can't afford everything, but can we still offer some alumni services down the road beyond just the account? I know we can't get there today, but to really help our alumni, should they derail for something that's not their fault, that we can help them get back on track? I think that's enough. And I think that also will help keep public education competitive as we're dealing with those voucher programs, that we want the student, if you're an alumni of our public school, you get access to that, and I, I think that's another place. Two things I just want to share with you, oh, love Boys and Girls Club, love that you're doing that. I want to add the why, because I think we can, I can bring them in. Girls Inc., they're ready to go, all set up. Two things I'm working on for you, call me. Aerospace, aerospace, all of this launch into space, kids, science, we're, we're ready to bring that here. And hospitality, I got a hospitality hot one for you, South County, call me.
I, I am always impressed when we have these presentations, it really is a point of pride. I think back to Mr. Kovach, and you always hear people say, bring shop back. I'm like, come on, look at, we don't call that, but like, come look at what we're doing in Sarasota County, because it's tremendous. And I will say, even on a state level, there's, it's very well-known that we do lead that, that, lead the pack. And that's a testament to all the work and the commitment. And it is amazing, because I've always saw, I mean, when you look at the pathway, there are pe, there are students that probably middle school are sitting there thinking, like, a four-year college is not for me. And for years, certainly in our generation, that was the only thing that was pitched to you. And so you felt like you had no future. So obviously, this is a completely different avenue, and it's very exciting. So much that you hit on, I won't, I, I'm, I love your energy. I know you eat, breathe, sleep this, it makes me so excited just hearing you talk about it. I'm definitely interested, I find these charts fascinating, and I know it's the first year, especially like the fresh, rising freshmen and looking at those numbers compared to 11th grade now, of course, I'm just very excited to see what next year looks like in the following year, as they enter, rising freshmen to graduates, et cetera. But it is, it is very cool how you're looking ahead at, you know, I think, I don't know if it was Trip, if you mentioned, or someone said something about customizing. if it was Trip, if you mentioned it, or someone said something about customizing these interests to their scheduling, which I think is wonderful because there's nothing worse than sitting at a class that you are just completely uninterested in, because I think it really brings down the rest of the day and another very important classroom opportunity. So I could keep going on and on. I do have a question on the, there was the job placement on the last on STC, let me see where it is, sorry. Are we seeing grow, so, okay, job placement, construction, auto. So is that growing? I mean, are we seeing, is that substantially growing compared to year over year when we look at our job placements at STC? This is for?
Yes. These are actual people, numbers, not percentages.
Right.
Those are, we're at capacity, so we don't see much growth. We see the percentages of 88% is about our placement rate.
Okay.
Is about right, 88, 89. Various reasons why people do not accept a job or take a job.
Right, right.
Our accreditation requires us to have 70%. And so we're above that average. And, you know, we look at the 12% that didn't get a job and still try to help them. And to Mr. Edwards' point, we're trying to create a centralized career center for our alumni at STC so that they would have one central location to come to. In regard to your graph analogy, we're, we're going to have some more data so we can compare. Instead of different cohorts that we're comparing now.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to compare the same cohort. How did they change over time? Not, you know, those cohorts are all different because of COVID.
That's exactly where they are.
We've got a big bubble in there that we're going to get rid of, we're going to be done with the bubble, and we'll be able to compare cohort to its own cohort year to year. And that way you can see, identify a change based on the same cohort, not necessarily that group of students, because each group of students has their own little nuances about their interest and what's, what's fascinating to them on the internet or what's fascinating to them in social media.
I love it. Well, and then one more question was, I know that we, for WBL, but do we also, or ask or offer the students to include, because many have part-time jobs, but may not be through us, are they putting that into the SchoolLinks database?
They're putting that into their profile in SchoolLinks, but we're not counting those numbers, yes.
Right, right, okay. I was just curious. So they are able to build upon that because, okay.
Absolutely.
Well, I am incredibly excited. I do love to hear, I, I, this stuff thing, I think this is great. And I think that we definitely lead in this area. I want to continue as we talk about legislative platforms. I always like this to be top of the top, because I just think it offers so much opportunity for students throughout their journey in K-12. And being, and our goal is allowing every child to have, be successful, productive member of society when they graduate. So you guys are doing a great job, so keep it up.
Thank you. You've done a phenomenal job of taking all the bits and pieces that were happening in isolation and by different partners, and you've programmatically put it in a systemized, transparent place for all of our students with lots of different facets and opportunities, and now putting in the, the key indicators for how that's working, all phenomenal. I want to make sure, in contrast to what's been said, that middle schools did have a college and career program in 2015 through 2018, and recognize the Education Foundation because they did fund Naviance. We had career advisors, we had plans at the end of middle school that kind of went on the wayside after 2018. But kudos to you for bringing it all, centralizing it and making it K through 12 and beyond very much appreciated. And, and those interest assessments, career clusters are all things that the Education Foundation, and also we're going to recognize Sue Meckler, she was front and center of, of a lot of work in that area. The one piece that I hear from parents and I learned to love, actually through you, Dr. DePillo, when, as a middle school principal, when we had the Technology Student Association at every school, but the robotics piece became one of my loves. And it's, and I've had this conversation with our superintendent, and I look to him of having those opportunities across all schools, particularly the robotics, it is skill-oriented, communication, deliberation, team building, confidence, there are so many components. And I see that we did a great job of which you were sharing with the students that did participate, and we placed well. I would, I'm very much advocating for families, for all of our middle schools, and to, to have those opportunities. You, you used to require it.
We do.
You sold me and I fell in love with it.
I think all of our middle schools have TSA with robotics in all of our high schools.
Engineering is our highest enrolled CTE pathway. There's, there's engineering programs at every middle and high school.
Middle school, they have a robotics program.
Not at Pine View. We don't have a middle school engineering teacher at Pine View yet. I'm working with Dr. Covert, we're going to make that happen.
All right. Thumbs up.
Yes. But there is a TSA chapter at every middle and high school minus the Pine View middle.
All right. You train to be well.
You're easy to train.
Thank you.
And beyond middle school, I mean, we, we really have to start at elementary. I know in previous districts that I've been able to serve in, partnering with like Lego around the robotics and, and the STEM initiatives were really big and really interesting for students and that whole awareness piece, right? We're not necessarily making them all engineers, but we're creating critical thinking, we're exposing them to career exploration. And so that's something that we'll continue to expand on. That is also built in the strategic plan around how do we have a robust STEM-focused initiative throughout the district at all level.
I do have a question. You mentioned aerospace. I know a couple of years ago, we had a presentation from Brevard County, I believe it was. They do a lot of work, obviously, given right there with Canaveral. What is our current, I mean, what do we currently offer in that space? No pun intended. And is there an opportunity, whether it be under, in the K-12 space or above? What is, what is the current status?
Well, part of it is we're just talking about robots that fly, right? So then we're getting into drones. And we, we do have some of that curriculum infused into our engineering and robotics programs, trying to keep our hands around that just to make sure we maintain safety. And, you know, with AI, we want to make sure we're using it appropriately and, and educating on ethics and everything involved with it. But, but yeah, aerospace, I know Pine View is interested in, in kind of creating a signature aerospace pathway, so that's something we can certainly work towards. But, but yeah, there, we, we do touch on it in most of our engineering programs.
Well, I know you always say the demand, give you the demand, and then we will feed that.
Exactly right. And so we're, you know, we look for the workforce on the end, locally, then we look regionally, then we look statewide. But we do also offer Emory Riddle courses at Sarasota High dual enrollment in aerospace engineering. So that was our first foray, foray into the aerospace. But as Mr. Jennings said, there's, there's a lot of those components that can lead out of our robotics program and our engineering program, which naturally fit in aerospace. We've had projects from the military base come down and ask us to do some design concepts at both, because all of our schools have laser engravers, all of them have 3D printers. We have the big machines for metal at the college, and all that interaction happens to go ahead and prototype ideas. And so we're all open to any kind of idea. But again, it falls back to, for workforce development, where is that work? We can design programs, but we also need to get held for accountability on the end when we say placement.
Absolutely.
And we want to work locally.
Ms. Marinelli?
I just want to add, from a, a school counselor perspective, when we're talking about the robotics and any of the programs, starting in, in kindergarten through 12th grade, all academics, everything that everybody does is to support that student in their academics. But when you're talking, when Superintendent Connor and Ms. Rose was talking about the robotics, you listen to what they said. Cooperation, helping others. You have your empathy where of kids who don't catch up. All the things that we, as a collective educational body, work with kids. We don't have to have all bunch of separate programs to have the counseling piece go into the academic piece, because it's right there. And, and you work closely with the teacher to get that all in. And I, I just think when you tie it all together, it, it shows that the school counselor absolutely has a role in the academic piece in conjunction with the teacher. And I, that would be something I'd like to see happen more, because I think then you're, it's not that disconnect that the school counselor does this, or the teacher does that, or the, you know, career advisor does that, you guys do this. It's, everything's all together to support that student's education. So thank you. I just wanted to.
Phenomenal. Thank you for your work. You, you look worn out. You've been working all summer, I can tell. That's, that's all of our invitations. We're all excited about it. So that concludes the agenda items, and we're moving on to board member comments. Mr. Edwards, please.
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Ziegler?
I am good.
Mr. Enos?
Thank you, I'm good.
Ms. Marinelli?
I just hope the public watches all this to see everything that is going on in our schools and how all five board members support everything, and this is the way it should be. So thank you.
Thank you. I would like to put food for thought out to our superintendent and to our legal counsel and to Mr. Parento, to, if there is consensus, and perhaps it's a discussion at a relatively future workshop relatively soon, on public safety in school board meetings of what are our rights as a board in implementing policy for safety of attendees to board meetings. Are they, public may not be aware that recently there was physical interaction in the board chamber with the emotion and passion that has been in the boardroom as of late, and charges filed for battery, and there's folks that really don't feel comfortable and haven't for a while. And I feel that it's something that we should discuss so the public can actually see, have we thoroughly sifted through what are our responsibilities to provide a safe boardroom? And the public may not be aware that the females on this board have had to have a police escort for several months because of the things that are coming into the boardroom and public comment. So I feel that's worthy of a discussion at very minimum, that the public sees that we hear them. And my ultimate goal would be to have traditional community members that have years past, have been part of this district for multiple decades. The participants in our board meeting, they look very, very, it's a very different face, it's a very different message as compared to all the years that we were doing more celebration, more participation of parent, community, and et cetera. So with that, we will be adjourning and we will resume at 6 o'clock for our regularly scheduled board meeting. And I could not be more excited about everything that was presented today. Thank you all.